Project, um, that we had some theater theater upgrades in the auditorium, lights in the control system, a new projector and screen. All copiers were replaced in the district. All new phone system and reconfiguration is happening this week. We've never had phones in the elementary schools. They will be put in this week. That's something we're looking forward to. Also, some new smart boards have been purchased and installed. Um, only a couple left. Uh, COVID guidelines. The, the CDC has issued new guidelines for schools. And I expect the New Jersey Department of Education and Health will also update school COVID protocols. Um, we're still waiting for that guidance, uh, but something that I did see already is that we will not have to test non-vaccinated staff members. They were testing weekly and submitting that test. That has been, um, discontinued. Uh, also, uh, state health standards. I've been getting a few emails regarding the New Jersey state health standards. Uh, we will be, uh, looking to approve that in September, but before we do approve that, we will be having a town hall meeting and going over the standards and how the district, um, plans to attack those standards, but also get feedback from our parents and, uh, families regarding the standards. Uh, so nothing is happening until those standards are approved, but anything that we do will be, uh, sent out to the families and they have clear understanding at what grades and what standards, uh, will affect certain grade levels in students. And then finally, we are finishing up our website and we are excited to announce a new smartphone app that we will be pushing out in September and we're just hoping to put a lot of, uh, information and communication updates right on someone's phone that they'll able, they don't have to go to the website. They'll be able just to look right on the phone for all a lot of important information. Uh, we also are fully, just about fully, uh, staff. We are missing one or two pieces. Uh, we are missing two class three officers. Uh, they have been advertised. Uh, we have not gotten a lot of hits from my understanding. That seems to be, uh, a big, uh, problem in the, in the county that they're not finding class three officers and our buildings, as you can see, are just about ready to go. Teachers come back next Thursday. Students come back two weeks from today. So we are excited for the 2223 school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Moving on to resolution 4.3, approval on agenda items 4.1 through and 4.2. Minutes of the open session from June 14th, 2022, open and closed session. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second, John.
Thank you, Ottega. Do I have any discussion? No, uh, Mr. Erfon, roll call.
Mrs. Alvarez.
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz.
Yes.
Mr. Ortega.
Yes.
Ms. Rocket.
Yes.
Mr. Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Erfon. Moving on to agenda item policy portion. Resolution 5.1, second reading, adoption of policies and regulations. Is there a motion to approve 5.1?
Motion, Natalia.
Alvarez, the second.
Second.
Mrs. Rocket, any board discussion? Mr. Erfon.
Mrs. Alvarez.
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz.
Yes.
Mr. Ortega.
Yes.
Ms. Rocket.
Yes.
Mr. Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Moving on to the education portion of the agenda, 616, approval of agenda items 61 through 615. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Cruz. Is there any board discussion? Mr. Erfon.
Mrs. Alvarez.
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz.
Yes.
Mr. Ortega.
Yes.
Ms. Rocket.
Yes.
Mr. Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Moving on to personnel portion of the agenda. Resolution 7.31, approval of consent agenda items 7.1 through 7.7, uh, sorry, 7.30. Is there a motion to approve resolution 731?
Motion, John.
Second, Natalia.
Mrs. Alvarez, any board discussion? Mr. Uh, Erfon.
Mrs. Alvarez.
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz.
Yes.
Mr. Ortega.
Yes.
Ms. Rocket.
Yes.
Mr. Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much, Mr. Erfon. Moving on to finance portion of the agenda. Resolution 8.19, approval of consent agenda items 8.1 through 8.18. Do I have a motion to approve resolution 8.19?
Motion, John.
Ortega, second.
Second, Alvarez.
Mrs. Alvarez, any discussion? Roll call, Erfon.
Mrs. Alvarez.
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz.
Yes.
Mr. Ortega.
Yes.
Ms. Rocket.
Yes.
Mr. Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to the buildings and grounds portion of the agenda, resolution 9.3. Approval of agenda items 9.1 through 9.5, I'm sorry, 9.2 through 9.5.
9.1.
Sorry, 9.1 through 9.2. I'm sorry. Is there a motion for resolution 9.3?
Motion, John.
Ortega, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Rocket, any discussion? Mr. Erfon.
Mrs. Alvarez.
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz.
Yes.
Mr. Ortega.
Yes.
Mrs. Rocket.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Erfon. Moving on to resolution 10.1, approval of music teacher. Is there a motion to approve resolution 10.1?
Motion, John.
Mrs., uh, Mr. Ortega, second.
Second.
Mrs. Alvarez, any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Does this differ from the music teacher that's on the chart up here? So earlier on.
The resignation?
No.
Oh, there is.
No, 7.28. There was a music teacher listed.
7.28 is the approval of S and R grant salaries and stipends?
That includes, that is included for this person as well.
I believe that is for after, that's for after-school, um, programs that we're running that we're going to be using.
It is. It's a Title V after-school music.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure we weren't doing it twice.
No other discussion? Roll call, Mr. Erfon.
Uh, Mrs. Alvarez.
Thank you, BC.
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz.
Yes.
Mr. Ortega.
Yes.
Ms. Rocket.
Yes.
Mr. Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next on the agenda is items 11.1, committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening? Any board member with committee reports? Having, having a great summer, I see. Next on the agenda is old business in items 12.1. Is there any old business the board would like to discuss? Probably forgot by now, right? Next on the agenda is 13.1. Is there any new business the board would like to discuss? Anyone? Thank you. Section 14.1, I'd like to open the floor to hearing, hearing of citizens. Is there a motion to open the floor to hearing of citizens?
Motion.
Mrs. Rocket, can I have a second? Alvarez, thank you very much. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there any board, I mean, any member of the public who would like to address the board? Speakers, please state your name and street address. You have five minutes. Do we have anyone? Anyone on line?
Yeah.
Need time to catch up. Okay. Is there a motion to close hearing of citizens' remarks on agenda items only?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now on to executive session in section 15.1 of the agenda. Uh, give me one second. I have to, I'm running through this really fast. Okay. Right here. Now that, I haven't. Now therefore be resolved by the Bogota Board of Education that whereas C dot 231 PL 1975, also known as the Sunshine Law, authorizes a public body to meet an executive or private session under certain limited circumstances. And whereas said law requires the board to adopt a resolution at a public meeting before it can meet in such an executive or private session. Now therefore be a resolved by the Bogota Board of Education that it does hereby determine it is necessary to meet an executive session on June, I'm sorry, on August 23rd at 7:14 PM to discuss matters involving negotiations, litigation and personnel. That the matter discussed would be made public when confidentiality is no longer required and action pursuant to said discussion shall take place only at a public, at a public meeting. Do I have a second? I mean, yes, do I have a motion for executive session?
Motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Rocket. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Alvarez, I'm sorry, uh, Mrs. Cruz, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, after close of discussion, right, we're good, right?
What time is it?
Did you go to go? All right, about 10 minutes, we'll be back out. Thank you very much.
All right, this is 30 minutes.
And then you're out tomorrow or Thursday? Thursday? Thursday.
A second? John? Any discussion? Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
We have a motion?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Rocket?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Thank you, Mr. Erfan. Moving on to agenda item policy portion, resolution 5.1, second reading, adoption of policies and regulations. Is there a motion to approve 5.1?
Motion, Natalia.
Alvarez, the second?
Second.
Ms. Rocket, any board discussion? Mr. Erfan?
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Rocket?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Thank you, moving on to personnel portion of the agenda, resolution 7.31, approval of consent agenda items 7.1 through 7.7, sorry, 7.30. Is there a motion to approve resolution 731?
Motion, John.
Second, Natalia.
Ms. Alvarez, any board discussion? Mr. Erfan?
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Thank you, moving on to personnel portion of the agenda, resolution 7.31, approval of consent agenda items 7.1 through 7.7, sorry, 7.30.